Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Heron, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four. Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Kruebe at large.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, you have the agenda in front of you. Do we need to approve as is or anything to be amended?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion we approve the agenda.
We have most approve the agenda. We have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter's second. All three of them saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item five to approve the minutes. We'll do them separately. I think everybody's here, but we'll do them separately for the June 2nd. A regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes presented to you?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Chairman made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Kruebe's second. In discussion. All three of them saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. June 16th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes presented to you?
Uh-oh.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Mr. Tipton's second. In discussion. All three of them saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda, decision expression period. Have a little quick note here. I will read to you and we'll go right into that. We have some couple of public hearings that will be happening later on the meeting. So those will wait to be the next items after we do decision expression. So with that, I'll read this and we'll go into assistance expression periods upon the meeting. When anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium. State your name, where you're from, and the county, and the organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we'll take everything that you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, do we have anyone signed up, Ms. Arms?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. We have no particular order. We just ask that you take turn to speak your business. Any action that will be considered after we close this expression period. With that, does anyone want to speak their assistance expression? Anyone?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mike Ratazki of Nicholsville, Virginia. Leisure requirements that have come down from Richmond, Virginia for the coming school year are outrageous. Allowing boys to claim to identify themselves as girls in female locker room, female restroom is absolute stupidity. Children this age can't even make up their minds what they're going to wear from one day to the next. According to experts, their brains aren't even fully developed. So how can they say they identify as being the other sex? This will end in many problems, one of which is the possibility of rape. It will lead to parents removing their children from school. And it could lead to the possibility of the county being sued. Not if something happens, but when. We need to stand up to the liberals in Richmond and just say no. If we don't take a stand here and now, who knows what they will come up with next? Maybe even the crap that's critical race there being taught in our schools. Also, something needs to be done about the trailer park in Nicholsville. I have a close friend who lives there. There's constantly noise from the vehicles in the middle of the night. The sheriff refuses to do anything. He has called, she has called down there and the dispatcher said, "Point blank." Well, there's nothing I can do. Since when does the dispatcher dictate on who's going to go who? There's so much trash blowing around there, it isn't funny. Rats are starting to show up. Cockroaches are invading people's homes. They've torn apart trailers and yet they refuse to clean them up. This doesn't look like a giant trash bin there. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good day.
Sir, do a spell your last name for me, please. All right. Thanks, sir. Appreciate you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? With that, we will come out of this expression period and, you know, there's a lot of stuff I agree 100% with you on. The trailer park issue, we can just report it off to law enforcement. Y'all have any comments here of what we can do? I mean, I don't know. It sounds like it could be a problem, but living there would probably be worse than I don't, so, you know.
It's just gotten out of hand. That place has started, has been banned for over two years that I know of.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming. What is the name of the trailer park?
I honestly don't know. Is it?
I don't remember. It's on, what's the right?
It's right up there by, um...
Kilgore Street.
Yeah.
Kilgore Street.
Yeah, Kilgore Street.
We'll find the owner and maybe they can do something on the trailer park. Maybe they can do something and, uh...
It only needs to be done.
Yeah.
But I've talked to her. She says if you sometime in Nicholsville refuse to do anything about it.
Okay. But we'll see. We're sort of limited to what we can do. I'm not trying to make excuses here, but we'll see what we can do to help with that.
I would very much appreciate it.
All right, and we thank you so much.
I know I couldn't with too.
And you might want to take this thing, your other issues to the school board. I mean, they're going to be wanting to decide this. And the man will have a choice. This came down from Richmond and I've seen some issues in Russell County with it and the other counties. But it's something they may be forced to do. So I don't know if I'd even give a legitimate comment because I don't know. But it did come down from higher up.
It came down to Richmond. The problem is, like I said, it's not the problem of if something happens, but it's when.
I agree.
I've got a granddaughter who goes to schools here. Let me tell you something. Anything happens to her, both county attorney and attorney general will be busy with me. Because I will not put up with anything happening to my granddaughter.
I understand. But thank you for coming, sir.
All right.
Our next item is a public hearing. It's on a special use permit. And let me bring this up down in front of you to make sure I get this right. And Mr. Gilbert here will be presenting to us. It's a special use permit application submitted by David White for a campground at tax map numbers 24-A5 in the Hynov area of Scott County. So, Mr. Gilbert, if you would, please. This is a public hearing.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Good morning. I had an application passed to me from Mr. White. You have the application. I gave you a packet with the information on it. It was back last September when this happened. And, uh, if you'll look, he applied for a campground over on, uh, it's off of Big, off of, uh, Big Stony Creek, uh, toward... Can't even remember the name of the road. Having a senior moment.
Greenschapel.
Greenschapel Lane. And it's adjacent to a piece of county property up there. Um, it, uh, it has, uh, we went, presented it to the planning commission. If you look at it there, Bill can get to the next slide, please. Uh, there's the application. It's a partial that, uh, there was a question on the ownership. I think that's since been straightened out. Next slide. Uh, that's where it's located in the county. Uh, if you look on the map there, um, that's more of a definite location. That's the partial that we're talking about. And the area that's in a little blue, I call it a blue-green, is the county property on the, on that Greenschapel Lane. Uh, it is agricultural residential. So the, and there's a definition of campground, um, for, um, out of the zoning ordinance. And it does require a special use permit. Uh, the adjacent landowners were sent a registered letter informing them of this hearing and they're, they have a chance to speak. Any questions?
No, I don't. Any questions for Mr. Gilbert? Anyone? Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
I'm David, Mr. White, chairman.
I want to say, I'm shocked.
Thank you.
The bottom edge of the picture.
That curve sheet's just a high level description of what we want. But it might have prompted questions.
Do you have any comments you want to make about it or you want to ask some questions?
Of course.
Uh, anybody have any questions for them on this, uh, this campground?
You can see from the drawing that we worked with Jeff Stapleton to make sure everything's done correctly. He's done a great job with the drawing and he's, um, he will start hopefully in the next couple of weeks on, um, the soil erosion sediment report.
I saw you all worked pretty hard to get some other property, like 13 acres total in it. And you've got all the digs and everything done, so that's all in place.
Yeah.
I seen that in the comments somewhere, you all have done that. A lot of legwork probably on your part.
It wasn't COVID that helped it.
Yeah, I can imagine, but, uh, anyway. Or any comments or questions for them? Just lay it in. Stick around.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
May I add something, please?
You will?
Am I out of order?
No, it's public. You can come up here to the podium.
Okay. I'm Pam Cox. I'm the tourism director for Scott County. And we, we've just started doing a visitor survey. And a lot of the, and I just got back some results from about the first week or so. And a lot of the things, I mean, we pretty much knew that people come to Scott County for the Devil's Bathtub and Natural Tunnel State Park. And the interesting thing that I have seen is that the majority of the people stay in campgrounds. Um, and last year during COVID, and, you know, I answered the phone with the questions for Devil's Bathtub. The very first question is, is there a place to camp near Devil's Bathtub? So, as a tourism director, and I understand this area is at the, near the Devil's Bathtub. Correct. True. It would be a great asset. It would, um, you know, help with tourism generation and revenue for the county.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Marlene Stapleton. And we own property next to, over there. And we take our families over there. And we've owned property over there for many years. We take our families over there. And I have 14 grandchildren. And we brought that property over there for our grandchildren. They're not biologically my grandchildren, but that's what we have it for. When you have campsites like this over there, you don't know who you're getting. Our property doesn't join the county, but it joins this need back here. And we, at the nighttime, we turn on lights. Our children runs from the county property all the way to our property. And they have a file. And when you bring something like this in, you don't know what kind of people you're getting in. I live next to, I live in Nicholsville. I live next to a trailer park, just like the gentleman here says. I pick up trash out of my yard. And I have, we don't want to have to pick up trash out of our yard up on Stony Creek. I mean, when we live there, all the kids goes around, make sure there's nothing in our yard. And that place is beautiful up there. We want to reserve that for our grandchildren. And we, that's what we thought it for. They're ages from 16 to 2. We have one grandchild on the way. And that's what we want to leave it as. And the county owns property down there next to the rez. And that's what, I mean, if you want to build a campsite, build it down there. I mean, so that we can reserve it. I have pictures here where it washed out back in 2019, right in front of our place. And then the state went back and put the rock back. Not quite like it did back when FEMA put it back. Put it back, yeah, right here. That's what the V-Dog went back, put it back. But that's what it washed out back in 2019.
I remember that.
Yeah. And that, um, but it washed out right then. Somebody had to drive through our yard to get out. I mean, which I didn't care.
Right.
I mean, if they, I mean, you know. But it washed down, and it washed down through the county property. I mean, you know, so it's going to wash down through the campsites and everything. I mean, you know, so it's going to, I mean, it's going, when that water, you know, comes up, it's going to come quickly. I mean, you know. So if y'all take that into consideration too, I mean, you know, so that... I, I just want to preserve it for my grandchildren. Um, you know, it's quite peaceful up there. We're working right now. I live, you know, children up there right now with my husband and stuff. He's not able to come, but, you know, seven month, our pregnant woman.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Brenda Mead and I live, well, in the Mid-Ohio section of Gate City. My husband and I own property that joins the county property over there. So we've got about 125 feet between us and Mr. White's property. We've owned that since 2010 and kept the maintenance on the moat to county property and make it looking good. We use that as a getaway. We bought it for the sole purpose of being able to go out in the peace and quiet. We go over there probably about every week, get us lunch, camp, and sit on our porch and watch. Beautiful location over there. Right now, they're over there spending the week. They spend Memorial Day weekend. Anytime these extra holidays, we're over there for the weekends. If at all possible. I mean, we'll say every one, but we try to make it. We just don't want that peace and tranquility that we've had destroyed. And like Marlene said, we don't know who will be in those campers. We don't know what type of people will be in there. So far, we haven't had any issues with anything bothered over there. We don't know what's going to happen. Now, the county has the ideal location over there for a campground. It's beautiful. Wouldn't take much stuff. And the county needs the revenue. So that would be a really good location down there where they own, down there at that Stony Creek Park. You know, I just really don't want, but that, our property, like I said, that peace and tranquility that we have now destroyed, which it would be. Because we can't, you can't turn your kids list because you don't know who's there. Right now, we can. Our granddaughter's over there right now with my husband. As one of the ones that she was talking about. You know, which is, we don't want it destroyed.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Nana Beckley and I've lived on Stony Creek for 45 years in that location. And my daughter was raised in that location. And, uh, Marlena and Ms. Mead are, they can tell you that I have, we have, our family has always treated them respectfully. And they us, but we never one time asked them how many people were going to come camping at their location? How many horse trailers were going to come? Where they were going to ride? You know, that, that was their business, their property. And my daughter didn't want anything I have in Dan Genon when I moved. But she wanted her home place on Stony Creek. So if she's willing to let people put a trailer on her home place, or a trailer court, and people, most of the time that own the trailer, uh, uh... Things that are tall behind a truck, my mind's gone to, uh, are not scum of the earth. I mean, you know, they're mostly normal, good people that bring their family to go hiking. Most people that are on drugs or drank, they don't get out and go hiking. They don't go to the Devil's Bathtub. They may stay up there occasionally, but normally they don't. And so I feel like that if they're going to put their time and their effort, and I understand about the peace and quiet. It was so peaceful and quiet, I had to leave. But, uh, all you ever shared was raccoon, something growling. But anyway, I understand that they like their peace and quiet and their grandkids. I have grandkids too. I have great-grandkids. And they thoroughly enjoy going down there. But I still say that a campground is not going to interfere. They come, like she said, uh, maybe three, four times a year. And my son lives there and he has no objections to it. So that's all I've got to say.
By the way, Nana serves on the town council, doesn't get into it, so...
Yeah.
She's elected, sort of like we are. We appreciate what you do.
Okay. We appreciate what you do too. Thank you.
We, we do. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? Like we will close, close the, this public hearing and we will discuss it here among us. The one thing that, that any business, there'll be some undesirables come, whether it's a store or whatever, you always have that. Hopefully, like what's going on in Nicholsville now, that law enforcement could be involved and do whatever they need to do. But the board here will decide this in a couple of minutes. So, uh, anyway, uh, I love where I live. I'm beside the rear, but I don't think bothering sometimes. It used to be a lot of occasional training, so anyway, we have our peace and quiet today and I value that. I also value people's property rights. Uh, we have, uh, zoning in place. We, the special use permit to do this is for a reason. And so, and let's board here make the decision. Comments from you all? Anyone?
This was recommended by the planning commissioner.
It was. And I meant to say that, thank you. It was recommended to the planning commission and we approved this. And, and we put a lot of credence in their decision-making, uh, their point about this board. And so I did put a lot of confidence in them. We have them for a reason. But thank you, Ms. Kruebe. Anything else? Anyone else? Comments?
I guess the biggest thing is, I noticed you, you put trash cans, so you put those top of trash cans, the bear, I mean, can't get into and things like that, so...
And someone will be taking that off.
Daily.
Daily.
The cones, uh, the bear, you know, and all the gridders, you're going to have to take it off every day. Or every, everywhere.
Yeah.
And we have to.
Esthetically, it will look better than it does now by the time we finish.
Anyone else?
You know, this is the second one, I guess, since I've been here that we've talked about. You know, the other one was down on 23, I guess. Of course, it, it was just a thing, maybe for tents and stuff right now. Anyway, uh, I spoke with a guy that lives up there and he's, he's okay with it. Uh, but he, he is concerned about the trash, you know. Uh, but not, this is nothing toward you all. But would there be any, I mean, this might be an ongoing thing, you know, where others might want to, uh, open up campsites. Would there be any way that we could regulate to make sure that, you know, they are kept up and, and clean and, you know, uh, in the future? And that might be something we need to look into. I, you know, we need to welcome all business that, that we can. And it's your all's property. You know, I, I don't think it's our, we should dictate, I don't guess, fully.
Can I say something?
Yep.
They're talking about putting a dumping station and there's a creek that runs in behind that. And they have to be like within 50 foot, like from a creek or anything like that. And there's a, a septic system up there. And anything that you put within, uh, water, that has to be within 50 foot from any natural waterway.
Right.
That's a health department issue and I don't know, I don't know the departments on it.
And that, uh, so anything like, and there's a, like any kind, when you dig a well or anything like that, it has to be within 50 foot from anything.
Yeah, it'd be a health department issue and I, I'm not sure.
And this is only for the property. On that special permit of... Of the section that you spoke of. At that 24-A6.
24-A5, I think that's what it looks like.
It's 24-A6, sorry. Because that 24-A5 is mountainous area.
Like a five to me.
Which one was?
It's 24-A5.
Eight, eight-five, yeah.
Yeah, that's why it's on here.
Okay. Because most of it is, is mountainous area.
Yes, someone was on the application, it's 24-A5.
Okay. Yeah. And that, uh, and if, y'all, I, I think somebody needs to go over there and, and drive by and, and look at it.
I have.
And that, uh, I mean, it's not as big as it, I mean, to put a lot of, uh, at the, on the... You know. I mean, you know, for the, I mean, you know, for the county owns.
All right. Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I would like to say that Jeff Stapleton, what opened the property with us, he had a drawing, uh, we've actually, that drawing is inside.
All righty. Any other comments? If not, we put it to a vote. They have needed a motion to approve this special use permit application. Do we have a motion to do so?
I'll make a motion that we put this forth.
It's you.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter's second. Any other discussion? All three of them saying aye. Aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Your permit has been granted. All righty. Next item is another public hearing, the possible adoption of orders placing levies on certain equipment and enabling software in a data center. Ms. Arms, if you would, please.
This is, um, the ordinance that we've talked about in the past. It's to set up the 24 cents per 100 on the equipment that would be in a data center if the county were to have one locate in the future. Uh, this ordinance has been adopted by the other RIFA counties, um, except for Lee County. And it's on the agenda for, I believe, July the 20th, 20th or 22nd at their next meeting. But the other, uh, RIFA counties have already adopted the ordinance. But the other RIFA counties have already adopted the ordinance.
Okay.
But it's to set the tax rate for data centers only at 24 cents per hundred.
Thank you, folks, for coming. Anyway, we have the order in place, hope you've had a chance to read it, and so we're in line with what the others have done, the 24 cents on each hundred dollars says values what it would be. And so it's a, to encourage those folks to invest in Scott County is what it's for. So with that, go up in the public hearing, anyone here wishing to speak? If not, we come out of the public hearing, and we'll vote need a motion to approve this order test presented to you, need a motion?
Still moved.
Mr. Kirby made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman's second, any discussion? All three of them said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item eight, it's on Duffield Days, Dickie Day, Mary Carter, are you here? There you are. Come on in.
Hello.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce myself, I'm Dickie Day, this is Mary Carter, and we're here on behalf of Duffield Days. And Mr. Kenny Fannin, yesterday, we sat down with him and asked him what we needed to discuss with you all to come in here. As you know, Kenny is a little bit under the weather, you know, he's not able to get out as much as he used to, and so he's not able to do this himself personally. We wish he could be here, but he's not able to. Um, so Duffield Days, of course, was founded in 1981 by Kenny, and this will be the 40th year that we've been doing this. I've only been involved maybe the last few years, Mary's been involved for several of these years, probably.
Probably 10 or 12.
Yeah, 10 or 12 years. I've just recently gotten involved the last few years, just to try to continue this tradition that Kenny started. Um, and of course, the event was started mainly for family and friends to get together at Labor Day. You know, we have music, we have a parade, we have classic cars, just tractors. We do the tractor pulls, just, just a time for family to get together. And it is, and it's for our small community, you know, it's Scott County, we're, we're a small place. But as you all spoke earlier, you know, for tourism, it's a good thing to try to draw people in here. It does help, you know, a lot of the local businesses, a lot of the people coming in. Um, so we are here to ask for some funds to help with this. I think in the past, normally, what you've done is a thousand dollars, and we would like to ask for that for this year if we could. Last year, due to COVID, we couldn't necessarily have the full Duffield Days, but we still had a small portion of it because we just wanted to continue it. We didn't want it to stop, so we wanted to keep going so we could make sure we at least got this 40th year. So last year, we did just like a little small parade, we did fireworks. Um, and of course, putting on an event like this, we are a nonprofit organization, but it takes about $15,000 to do this because you have to get insurance, you have to pay for tents, rental, you know, you have to have toll trees for people. Um, and then, of course, we, we do purchase t-shirts that we sell, and we do try to make a little bit of money on those t-shirts to help pay for what we're doing. We don't do anything for money for ourselves. And then, of course, we have to pay for the tractor pulls. And normally, the money that we get from you all is to help with the tractor pulls, and that draws in a lot of people from out of state as well. So that's what we would like to ask from you guys today.
All right. If you haven't been to Duffield Days, you gotta go, I, I lived on it, it's a good time. Family atmosphere, I love it, it's great to be in our county.
Yes.
All right, any comments or questions?
I'm glad you're gonna be able to do it this year.
Yes, we want to, we're so thankful, yes.
I.
Okay.
Um, with the fireworks, you'll also need to get the board's approval for a fireworks permit?
We always do, yes, we always get that, we get the permits, and that's the reason, and that's also the reason why we have to have insurance. And we also make sure that the person that does the fireworks also has insurance.
Okay. Yeah, because usually they give us a copy of that.
She's, I think she's getting ready to, I think she contacted you.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Julie.
So that'd be, I have the next progress, I guess, for us to prove, do we, do we vote on it? We don't do it?
Usually.
We do? Can't remember. All right, but, all right, any other comments or questions for these two ladies? Anyone? Thank y'all, we do miss Kenny, but thank y'all for stepping up and doing this, so. He's done a lot, that guy's pretty remarkable, remarkable, he really is. All right, any comments? If not, we entertain a motion to approve the $1,000 from our contingency funds, where it would come from, that would be part of the motion, so when we do it.
Just real quickly, just tell Kenny that I said aye. I know I took my grandson down there, and he took us out to the, all the train stuff, and gave us, you know, the tour of that, and, and my grandson greatly appreciated that. And, I mean, he took, he takes the time, you know, to do that. It doesn't matter if it's one person, two persons, or whatever.
He did the same thing with my son, my youngest son, he took him out there, and he went through it and explained everything to me, and so, yes. He's a very generous person.
He is. Anyone else? I need a motion to approve the $1,000 request from our contingency fund, do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, ma'am, Mr. Hood made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kirby's second, any discussion? All three of them said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so, good luck with it, hope to see y'all down there.
We thank you very much, thank you.
It's Labor Day weekend, folks, you can go to Edison, it's a good event in the county. All right. Next item is, is item 10, a resolution declaring an end to the local emergency duty code 19. Note, we're sitting back up here now, we're not back there spraying like we were. I feel pretty compensated when we closed everyone again. And so, anyway, to end this local emergency, we do need to vote on this resolution. Hope you have a chance to look at it. So without a lot of discussion, unless y'all need to, we'll vote on it. Do we have any discussion before we vote?
If I can just say a few words, I'd ask you all last month for authority to repeal the continuity of government ordinance that went along with this local emergency. This resolution will take care of that too, so we don't have to go through the public hearing and everything to repeal that ordinance.
All right. So we've had before, we've already discussed before we vote. I'm glad to get away from it, so.
I was gonna say, I'm excited.
Me too. All right, we need a motion to approve this resolution as presented to you.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Chairman made a motion, I'll second. Mr. Tipton's second, any discussion? All three of them said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is a, is a Public Service Authority PSA Resolution of Support Agreement, Providing for Scott County's Moral Obligations to Make Certain Appropriations in Perspective Revenue Bond to Scott County Public Service Authority in the amount not to exceed $1,570,720. So we can, Mr. Arns, you want to discuss, I don't know if Mr. Dishman is here, but.
He's gonna speak, he has all the information.
You want to come back, then you can, that's what we're doing here. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a standard procedure, every time we get a bond, that we, that the county commits a moral obligation to support the loan that the PSA is taking out. So this is a project I've talked with you about a few times, Robinette Valley and Hunter's Valley West waterline extension. So we got the mixture of loan and grant, and we just asked for your approval of support resolution for the loan, one, one and a half million dollars.
And that, that's what we do all the time as far as these resolutions, for them, because whatever obligation they did, ultimately, we're somewhat responsible for it, so. Anyway, just, that's all, that's all it's saying, that's what we're doing.
When do you anticipate that starting?
I anticipate it starting this year. Uh, Robinette Valley, you know, went to bid in May, opened bids in May. And so we were going to do Hunter's Valley West, construction with our crew, Robinette Valley with a contractor, but the bid climate is, is to an extreme. Prices are extremely high, we can't, couldn't afford to have a contractor do Robinette Valley. So even though it will delay construction, our crew is going to have to do the construction of the whole project, including Robinette Valley.
So your crew's going to do Hunter's Valley West to?
Yes, we were always going to do Hunter's Valley West, but we're going to have to do Robinette Valley as well.
They don't win that much.
So I anticipate it'll start this year.
This year, as in? Because we're going to get asked that, I've got asked that.
Um.
And I'd like to be able to answer that.
Right, okay, well, we're working on, we've got to do, finish Dingus Hollow, and we've got to finish Alley Valley, and then Robinette Valley's next. So I'm, I'm anticipating fall, is that close enough?
Fall, October-ish?
Fall of 2021.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and things happen, there, below my house, they had some leaks and stuff, and his crew was there working, so that was something, the water was off for those folks, so those things was kind of a plague, that's why he said, I'm sure, because you don't know.
Yeah, we had an extreme amount of leaks.
Yeah.
For some reason, past couple of months, so it's very unusual for summertime. And so that, things like that, delay, you can't postpone fixing a major leak.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They were there several days, guy was from Salem, I think, is, I don't remember his name, I talked to him.
Kenny Reynolds, yeah.
Yeah, that's him, and, but he was, they found that one leak there. And one problem they had, and I know we're, I get accused of talking too much, but they had brass fittings, and there has, had come apart, and they can't use certain metals in it. And so it had been a couple of years ago, it had already deteriorated to the point where it had, it had come apart. The metal, the metal actually separated, so these things happen. And so they got it fixed, they'll have the water off, they had to come and fix it. So those guys, they were down in the mud and the dirt, and they got it done, but it was, it was some hard work that they had to do. Those things you cannot plant.
No, just go put some fires out sometimes.
Yep, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
I don't have to twist any arms in, right?
Well, maybe, maybe it's Sally or Farina. But anyway, needs to be done, so we need a motion to, any discussion before we vote? Need most approval of this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Hood's second, any discussion? All three of them said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
See you next month.
All right. Next item is appointments, Ms. Tane, if you would.
You have one opening on the Tourism Committee that was held over from last meeting. You do not have.
Any nomination for the Tourism Committee? We delay it one more time, we've had a lot going on, I mean, I have, this whole board has in the last month, and so let us work on that one more month, if we have a nomination today. And we'll, a couple of people I want to ask to do it, they said they want to get involved in things, so we'll give them a chance.
Do you have anybody, Pam, in there?
Um, I thought I had two people, and they turned me down.
But in August, they will have some other for you, all right?
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All they have, they don't have to do a lot, except, you know, tell me which events and sweat. It's all it requires, is just a little bit of sweat and.
They had that Highmark Music Festival, Pam was there, and so she was kind of impressed, I rode my bicycle, but I tell you, it's electric, and I can tell when I want to. But it was fun, but glad to see you out there, you were involved in it, all right? Uh, the Planning Commission, next, Ms. Tane, correct?
Pat Eskins has been serving, and he is not interested in reapplying. He did not receive any advocates.
Do we have any nomination for the Planning Commission? If not, again, I think we'll have some next time, a couple of people I want to start to get involved in things, and this too, so we will take it at the end in August if we have one.
Yeah, I'd like to see more people that say they want to be involved, get involved.
Yeah, me too. All righty, thank you, ma'am. Next item is item 13, or County Attorney Items, Ms. Keg, do you have anything for us?
No, I don't have anything this morning, you're on my report.
I did.
Answering questions.
Any questions for Ms. Keg? When you don't have your county attorney working, it's a pretty good thing, because that means everything's kind of calm a little bit. So thank you, ma'am, for your services. Next item, item 14, County Administrator Items, if you would, Mr. Arns.
You have your green sheet for your treasurer's accountability. The available cash in the general fund is $4,919,536.42. Your July claims that we need to prove total $257,122.53, and there was no early claims this time. Some of the larger claims, Appalachian Juvenile Commission for July was $16,902. Planning District One Behavioral Health Services, $14,456.25. Tobacco Region Revitalization, the second payment back on the trough agreement, $50,000. And VACOR, $98,551.79 for our first fiscal year '22 payment for insurance. So total claims, $257,122.53.
What's the treasurer of Virginia Tech, what is that?
Uh, that is the portion that we pay for an extension agent.
Oh.
Person for the Scott County location.
Okay.
We do that in quarters, so it's usually in the $40,000 range.
Okay, thank you.
And as you can see, though, we're a little better off than we were this time last year, and so thanks to the folks that is making these things happen. I know we make decisions sometimes that some people don't understand, but anyway. One thing I did say, we're not broke. The county, we, we got, you know, we're, we're able to do what we do, but, you know, we just operate at a negative amount, and our officer of Lee County there operates over 1.3 million deficits, so we're in this together, a lot of it, and we are. And so there's a lot of issues going on that we have to deal with, that's your job as a, as a board supervisor member. So anyway, any comments or questions for Ms. Arns on the claims? If not, we need a motion to pay the bills.
Still moved.
Mr. Judah made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton's second, any discussion? All three of them said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. If we start.
Under miscellaneous, I have one item. We received a request from Mountain Empire Elder Citizens to sponsor their Walk-A-Thon, which is for the Emergency Fuel Fund. And they are going to have a live event this year, and that's going to be held on August the 29th. Um, last year, the program expenses totaled over $203,000. Uh, the home heating assistance includes help and delivery of gas, coal, gas, oil, wood, and payment of electric bills up to $300 per household. The assistance provides life-enhancing and oftentimes life-saving electrical service. The MEOC program has served older persons in our region for 45 years. They receive no federal or state funding for this program, and it is solely funded by donations from churches, individuals, businesses, and civic groups. And every penny raised is used to assist with heating expenses, and none used for administrative cost. And their request this year is a $5,000 contribution for the Emergency Fuel Fund. And we did sponsor them in 2020 with that same amount.
Will that come out of our contingency fund too?
Yes, sir, that's what you chose to do.
Something we might like to think about if we do this, is make it a line item in our budget. You know, y'all think about that for next year, we're on the budget committee to do that. But it is a good thing, I know an elderly neighbor that he gets his cold, he gets with cold, he's still, they, they help him with his, as long as I know of, I know they did have a lot of people in Scott County, for fuel assistance and so on. All right, any, any comments or questions from Ms. Arns about this? I have a Walk-A-Thon, I think you said, they did that every year, don't they? If you get a chance to go do it, I haven't, I wanted to, but it's always a conflict somewhere, didn't get to go, but, you know, it is a good time. Any comments or questions here before we vote? Anyone? I entertain a motion to do this out of our contingency fund, Board of Supervisors' contingency fund. And do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Mr. Chairman made a motion, do we have a second?
Still moved.
All right, Mr. Kirby's second, any discussion? All three of them said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so motion is carried. Anything else, Ms. Arns?
That's all I have.
All right, next item is a presentation by Ms. Cox, if you would, to. All right, next item is a presentation by Ms. Cox, if you would, Tourism.
Y'all want to take a break. I have a lot to say.
No, we're good.
Are we?
Are we?
You want to take a break? All right, take five. They're talking right into it, Pam. Sorry. We're going to take five.
Well, I just, I just thought I'd go to work yet, you know? You know how much I can talk, so.
Ms. Pam Cox, Tourism Director, so if you would.
Wait on me.
Wait on me.
Yeah, so good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Great day in Scott County, so as always. So, uh, what are you doing over there?
You're good.
There's nothing up there. Hey, I can't talk without paws.
She really can't, I'll say.
Okay, so this is my quarterly Scott County Tourism Report. And, um, you know, so I will proceed. So I believe the last time I was here, I talked to you all about the Virginia Drive 2.0, grant process. And these are the counties that initially got, um, were chosen to participate in the first part of the Virginia Drive 2.0 to get the $10,000. There were all kinds of things that you had to do. You had to get 30 people to complete the, um, a venue survey. Then you had to do consensus building that someone participated in. And of the, of the 10, two of them dropped out and didn't complete it. And I know one of my friends was one of the other counties and she basically told Virginia Tourism, she said, "It's too hard." Oh, she, she basically said, "It's too hard." So, um, but anyway, we persevered and we went on. And so we did do, um, two, we did two consensus building meetings. We did one, um, which was a Zoom meeting. The second one was we held an in-person meeting. And by that time, everything kind of, you know, settled down with COVID and we felt that it would be safe. We weren't going outside. And I always try to get my venues together, you know, a couple of times a year and let them see what's going on with other venues and venues of other venues. So we decided, Mark Bradley invited us to Creation Kingdom Zoo. And that happened to be the coldest night in April. It was snowing. We had on coats and hats and winter gloves, but we had a great turnout. I had three new venue owners come in. PJ Johnson with Pongo Farms came in and Jeff Arrington that has the Hiltons-Fulerson House and Jenny Gallantin that has Squatchy Adventure. So they all came to, um, to that. And we did a great deal of talk and discussion about how we were going to use this $10,000 grant. My husband Keith Wilson served as the facilitator and I kind of walked the group through what we were going to do. So what we came up with was to distribute a detailed visitor survey. And we're doing that, we've, we've started and I have gotten back some information. So if you look at the poster there, that poster has a QR code. And the posters have been placed in all rounds Scott County, even at Falls of Little Stoney. And the QR code is tied to a specific location and it's going to run through, there's a really good prize package that encourages visitors to participate. These are the items that they have the ability to win. So we're going to run that June through December of this year. And we decided to end in December of this year because they always have a lot in the tunnel. And we're going to analyze the data and we will come back in March of next year and provide the distribution to the Board of Supervisors and also to the public with a one-page infographic that we're going to do and insert in the newspaper. And we're also going to do some mailers. And then once we're finished, um, the data will be distributed and it will help us decide where we need to spend our money and what do we need to build? What, what other things do we need to provide to folks that come to Scott County? And I've already gotten some back and it's been very interesting what I have received. You know, as I mentioned earlier, it did come back and show that Devil's Bathtub and Natural Tunnel run neck and neck. But the surprise that I have seen is, um, guess how many days people stay here? The average farm exceeds, they stay four plus days in Scott County. And they spend well over $500 in Scott County. And a few weeks ago, I always read this column in the King's War Times, it's a syndicated columnist, um, by a man named John Newby. And he runs Truly Local, it's a national organization. And he talks about tourism and the effects of tourism and how it can really impact your locality. And these are his figures, they are not mine. So he uses the analogy that if you have 10,000 visitors, if you can encourage 10,000 new visitors to come to your county and spend, or your locality and spend $500 in your locality, that that would produce an additional $5 million that would circulate through your community. You can, you can look him up. It's an organization called Truly Local Syndicated Columnist running the King's War Times News. So tourism really does have a significant, it can, it can have a significant impact on your locality. Helps with your funding. I believe I told you that I was presenting a couple of presentations coming out. And I did the 4H Shark Tank Challenge and the Daughters of the American Revolution. Well, the Daughters of the American Revolution was just a standard presentation, but as you all know, I love to talk. So I created about a 45-minute presentation. And it was all about tourism and what we do and everything. And the night before, the person who had contacted me, she said, "How long is your presentation?" And I said, "Oh, 45 minutes." We could see her face drop. And she said, "I don't need 15 minutes." And I mean, I did, I had a 45-minute presentation. So the next day, I mean, it was on a Saturday and I had to come in and we did a Zoom meeting. So I just hurried through that and I think those people probably thought I was an idiot. But I was just trying to, um, get finished and everything and not, um, not monopolize their time. And when we did the consensus meeting, PJ Johnson was there. PJ is going to be the new Walter Manius. You know, Walter has retired this year. And PJ and his family have a farm, a pumpkin farm, and it's called Pongo Farms. And it's out in the Nicholsville community. And after we had the meeting and everything, PJ and his daughter came up and he was talking, he was bragging about, you know, how it was all a family affair and everything. And he said, "Yeah, and my daughter here set up my website." And she lifted her head and she said, "Well, Ms. Cox was the one who taught our marketing class." And he said, "She's the one who taught me how to do," and said that I needed to do a website. So that's kind of one of those heartwarming moments that lets you know that you impacted something, you, you really helped somebody. So, you know, that's kind of like one of those comments that makes everything okay. And you can just take that one and go on and on and on forever. I have helped, well, I helped with a grant. I don't know if you all are familiar with the Heart of Apel-, you're familiar with the Heart of Appalachia and what the town of St. Paul and the county of Russell tried to do. They're, they were given a piece of property by VOD several years ago. And it's a triangular piece of property. And they designated, they gave it to them with the designation that it be used for tourism. So they are building what they're calling the Three Rivers Destination Center. And they're hoping to, they've applied for an ARC grant. I wrote a nature conservancy grant for them, which was, was a $100,000 grant. I serve, since I'm on the Heart of Appalachia Board, I serve on this community as the Scott County representative. I did apply for the next round of the Marketing Leveraging Grant. And their theme for going into the fall, they've been doing the Wonder Love, um, is Eat, Drink, Love. So my application is Eat, Drink, Love, Small Town America at its Best, featuring Scott County as the best place in the world to come and be. And, you know, perhaps to encourage folks to move your, you know, I hear a lot of people that, um, you know, my husband and I are from here and we came and fell in love and we stayed. So, um, if you add up the grants that I've gotten in the last year, that's $40,000. So I've covered my salary, a little bit more, but all of those dollars have been used for marketing efforts. And I will show you what we have been doing, what we have, oh, whoops, whoops, whoops. Go back one. Why can't that go back? Okay. So remember when I asked you all for the $500 for the materials to build the Devil's Bathtub kiosk? So now we have the Devil's Bathtub kiosk. And we put it up. And there is what the kiosk looks like. One side is a map of the county, which looks like this. And the other side has kind of a detailed listing of all of the various things that you can do in Scott County. Last week, we put up brochure holders out there and I went and put our new brochures in there. We also have one of the surveys is up there. So I have this, I have this with me and I'll tell you why I have it with me in just a minute. So anyway, that's, uh, and I think it really kind of adds a lot there. The folks that are doing this are really good. I mean, they're a little expensive, but you know, um, that looks really good. So, let's see. Oh, so yesterday, as I was going to the, um, again, to the fair meeting, I stopped at Devil's Bathtub and they had just stopped, they had just stopped the brochures in there. There's seven holders up there. And they'll say, "Do you want me to put any more in there?" They're all gone. Everyone of them are gone. And you all have a copy of the brochure. It is a very detailed, um, it's a 36-page brochure. And one of the things that I learned in talking to folks and visitors last year was that they need all kinds of information. When they come to stay in a cabin, they need to know where the grocery stores are, if they have an emergency. They need to know where the nearest clinic is or hospital. So all of that is listed in there. And most of that, I spent the time during COVID and we were in lockdown, going through, trying to gather all of that information and compile it. And when I handed out the brochure at, to, um, to staff, several people said, "Well, I didn't know all that was in Scott County." And it's that, and it's that thing where you don't know what's in your own backyard. And so the reason that I have this with me is, oh, you know, for about six years, I've wanted a map, a real map of Scott County that has real roads and shows where all of the destinations are. We've used those pull-off maps for years. So we have maps. They will be here on Friday, but apparently what I asked to do was very, very difficult. The printer that initially, that did it said, you know, "On paper and in looking at," and then looking at our folder, we thought we could do this. Well, so when they did it, um, every third one rolled it, rolled up into a ball. So they ended up having to send this to Chicago to be published. But, you know, we still have the same price that what was been on. So they will be here Friday and I will have 10,000 maps to distribute. So when I talked to Robert Chapman at Natural Tunnel, he said, "I can sell those." And I'm like, "I don't think we can make money, but anyway." So I'm real anxious to get these. On the back, it has, um, it has the same information that's on the kiosk. Oh, and so you all may remember that when we did, um, when we did the RFP, the Town of Gate City and Carter Family Fold wanted to be included in the, in the RFP. Each one, each one of us had the $20,000. And so, and the main thing was so that all of the materials that we put out were kind of similar looking and it's kind of reveals that we're all one and everything. So this is the brochure that they have done for the same agency has done for the Town of Gate City. I'm sorry, I don't have any copies of those. And I don't know if any of you all have seen the video on Facebook that they did for the Town of Gate City. It's like about an eight-minute video, but it, but they've done a really, they do a really exceptional job. It's corporate image out of Bristol. The Town of Gate City and I have worked together to be able to, um, extend our MLP dollars. We have split the cost of full-page ads in Blue Ridge Outdoor. So the first one that we did was Experience Virginia's Wild Side. And I mean, by splitting the cost, it's less than half a page ad would have cost me personally. And then in the magazine that's coming out this week, um, we did back, back road road trips. So we, you know, included several different things in that. I've, we also, I've also purchased, um, some ads for Creation Kingdom Zoo and the Carter Family Fold in a magazine that the Heart of Appalachia is producing that they're going to take to all of their trade shows and distribute for free. It'll be a real nice four-color detailed publication. And Rita Forster with Carter Fold and I are scheduled to go with the Heart of Appalachia to the International Bluegrass Music Association, um, in Raleigh in October. And that, you know, that's a huge deal. I still have everything left from what I did, from what I created last time. I have this backdrop, that's the stage of Carter Fold, I still have the stand-ups. But it will be greatly to my benefit to have a true member of the Carter Fold there at will to answer the question. So I'm really excited that she has decided to go. She's retired now and, um, she said, first I didn't think she was, and she said, "Mm, I'll go." So oh, and we're hitching a ride with somebody too. Hitch it. I, I'm cheap. I mean, you know, what I can, what I can get for free, I get for free. If I can get somebody to shave me, I'm gonna get somebody to shave me. And thanks to the Heart of Appalachia, we've gotten our partnership with them. We've gotten some great publicity. We've gotten, this is Gulf Hike Virginia's blog and several other blogs that featured the Dino Boom Wilderness Trail. This one featured Natural Tunnel State Park. But they also have been purchasing, um, spots and ads. There are more editorials in USA Today in their travel sections. So that represents a significant amount of money that they have spent and have had. But probably the biggest contribution that they have done for us is, I, I could not put the video on. I didn't have the link to download it. But I guess a couple of weeks ago, they brought in a team from W, Heart of Appalachia, brought in a team from WJLA in Washington, DC. It is a flagship, um, for Sinclair Broadcasting, which also owns the Bristol, Virginia, uh, WCYB, excuse me, WCYB. So it's a flagship station. We had a four-minute piece up twice on their TV station in Washington, DC. When they've also covered, um, Grace Interstate Park. And that, they have probably spent $40,000 in doing this promotion for, um, the counties in the Heart of Appalachia region. The King's War Times News graciously ran a story that I had written on the Fulcerson Hilton home. That's the newest, been Airbnb, um, Times News and the Scott County Star. They're also, they're always gracious in featuring their stories. And right now, our free publicity is ending at 186, 721, 40. And the best news of the year is events are returning. So first one that we did was Run the Tunnel. And just like Creation Kingdom Zoo, that was one of the coldest days I have ever experienced. My, well, I'm president of the chamber this year. And of course, we haven't really done anything. We meet on Zoom and stuff like that. But my daughter wanted to run in it. So she said, "Mom," she said, "would you volunteer and would you please take Marilyn with you?" Marilyn is my granddaughter. So the first picture that you see up there is Jessica who's running and my granddaughter, Marilyn, giving a high five. Marilyn was freedom, but Marilyn stood there and she told everybody where to go. I didn't have to do anything. She said, "Go that way, go that way." So I just took a bunch of pictures and she was delighted to be there. They had some, they had a good participation in that despite the cold. And as Danny said, the High Knob Music Festival returned. That beach looks great. They have done such a wonderful job up there. And, you know, I posted those photos, not realizing that they had only opened that for the music festival. And, um, you know, a lot of people were like, "Well, it's not open." So, you know, that was kind of my fault, I guess. But I think there were like 10,000 views on Facebook with that. They had the Dungian, the Dungian and Kaiak race. I couldn't go that day, uh, but I heard Lenora participated. She said that was great. That's Lenora. And notice, notice that Stoney is behind her and the other, um, the other kayak, I guess a dog, is driving that one. That's Ned, uh, not Lydia, Lydia's that works for the Town of Gate City. Lydia and her husband came in last and Lenora came in third, right? So, and let's see, most of us, I don't really, two. So this week, this Saturday, we're starting out with Newby in the Park in downtown Gate City. They're doing, um, Kids' Day, but they're going to have combustibles and things like that. Cevitans are giving out free hot dogs.
Inflatables, not combustibles.
Oh, sorry. Well, I was going to say. We don't want combustibles. Combustibles might be more. Inflatables. They're inflatables. They're giving away free hot dogs. And at dusk, they're doing, um, they're showing the sandlot. And, um, at five o'clock, they're doing music in downtown Gate City again. It's called, "We're Still Standing." And it's called, "We're Still Standing Because We're Still Here." After the horrible year that we've had and we've all made it through and we're all proud to still be standing. And the featured performers are, this is the correct name, Hootie and the Bro Fish, not Blowfish. We could not afford them, they could not afford them. And Matchbox 2.0, not Matchbox 20. They are cover bands for these. And we just found out. Um, and we just found out last Friday that Railroad Days is returning to Natural Tunnel State Park. And a lot of people might think, "Well, Railroad Days," but, you know, that doesn't really interest me. But people come every year. I mean, I stood in line with people from, you know, Blacksburg all over Virginia that say, "We drive down and we come every year." So people really look forward to that. There are some huge railroad enthusiasts around here. Oh, and if you need, if you want to volunteer, um, Natural Tunnel, they do need some volunteers to help on that. Contact Regent Coe. Um, we're doing Kiss the Grid again this year. That is the gravel bicycle race and that is August the seventh. Following that, we're doing Welcome to the Jungle. And that is Guns N' Roses, Guns N' Roses. Guns N' Roses, correct? Yeah, okay, Guns N' Roses. Uh, yeah. Um, and then the next event that they're doing is Cruiser Palooza, and that is in September. The Carter Fold is reopening August the twenty, the last Saturday, August twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, with Appalachia rising. Um, we're doing Duffield Days. Just heard. The Papa Just Mini Mountain Music Fest will be back. Lighting of the Tunnel has resumed, picking in the park. We're gonna do, oh, I've got Duffield Days up there twice. The Christmas lighting of the tunnel will be held again this year. They're, they're returning to doing some ranger programs at Natural Tunnel State Park. And they're also doing Wilderness Road Blockhouse. But the biggest and the newest event that we're having is the Scott County Fair. So we are doing the Scott County Fair. It's called Your Scott County Fair and Burley Fest Horse Show. It runs Wednesday through Sunday, August the twenty-fifth and the twenty-ninth. Wednesday and Thursday, it's three to ten PM. Friday and Saturday, it is three to eleven or whenever the horse show is over that night. Sunday, it is ten AM in Cowboy Church. So they're gonna have live music, horn honk tournament, vendors, food trucks. Danny's Brothers Band is playing Southern Revival. And we're still working out a lot of the details, but, um, it's going to be a really good event and people are really looking forward to it. I know when I'm places and I say something about, they're like, "Oh, boy, fair, it's coming back." Um, admission is fifteen dollars nightly with unlimited tickets, unlimited rides, and/or forty-five dollars for the entire week.
Alan Hicks did commit on that Friday night. And the ETSU Bluegrass Band, they're, they're this close to committing, but Alan Hicks' crew will be there.
Okay.
So they're shutting theirs down that Friday night and they will be at, uh...
Oh, good. Oh, good, that's great. Thank you.
They're excited about the, the band that was there that night. They said they wanted to come, so they're excited about performing there.
Yeah, and Danny Young, Danny's brother is doing all of the sound and everything. Um, so now that the events, now that the events have returned, I've started doing my weekly emails. I send them out. I have a distribution list and then I also share that on, um, Facebook and Twitter. I know that the folks that have the Airbnbs, they forward this on to their upcoming guests so they'll know what is going on. Okay. So I just want to give you a few updates. I've been delivering the brochures. Of course, you know, I've got to stop and talk to everybody. So Appalachia Mountain cabins, um, Mr. Baker, who is, what, eighty-plus? Is thinking about building new cabins because they have had such high demand for their cabins.
You told me that too.
Yeah. Natural Tunnel State Park, their occupancy has been at capacity most weekends. The occupancy rates for the other Airbnbs, um, the other folks, they're running about seventy-five to eighty percent. And I remember back a few years ago when we did a venue meeting, the, um, folks said that they would like to see their occupancy rates at eighty percent. So now they're there. Um, and Bill and I heard just a couple of weeks ago that someone has bought the Miller Yard property and he's doing a development that's going to include tiny houses and yurts. Um, the yurts will have to be, the tiny houses will be built above the flood plain, on property that's not at the flood plain. And then the yurts will be, I guess on the steels. They'll have to do something to avoid being in the flood plain. Um, this is how much the, the Gate City Mills taxes increased since, um, twenty-fourteen. It's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. And Greg Jones says, "We'd like tourism." Um, and this is a really, really interesting statistic to me. And this is not, these are not my figures. This came from Don Finley. And Don Finley is, he works for the Business Journal and he is a real estate expert. And he used to be, um, the editorial director of the Kingsport Times News. Um, I trust Don, I know that he, I know that his numbers are correct. His research is impeccable. Um, there was an article, oh, probably about a month ago, that was talking about migration, people who are moving into Scott, who are moving into the region. Um, and for Scott County, he showed that air population has increased one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two percent with a hundred and sixty-five new residents. Now, some people have questioned that, but my guess is because in previous years, we've lost population. So now we're seeing new people move into the area, which, that's all a great thing. And now I have a couple of things to ask for the board of supervisors. And here's the big thing, Doug should have missed. I was sent to make these, to make this request. Um, Bill and I both serve on the High Knob Enhancement Corporation. And I think Danny, you're on there too.
Yeah, but I already can, like, the meeting's complete or something, but yeah.
Yeah. So if you all remember, um, the High Knob Enhancement Corporation was formed specifically to rebuild the fire tower that was damaged, um, by arsonists on Halloween one night. So they've done that, they raised a million dollars. And after that was completed, they wanted to continue, you know, doing things in the High Knob area. So we both work together and serve, um, on that committee, on that corporation. And, I mean, they're funding this, they, they haven't done it in any other fundraiser or anything like that. They do support the High Knob Music Festival. And they were asking if perhaps Scott County could place a line item in their budget just as kind of some seed money for a thousand dollars a year. And it's kind of for infrastructure needs. And the first thing that they went to tackle is signage. Um, I, I don't know if you all go up to High Knob and everything, signage is really pretty bad. Um, I figured that out a couple of weeks ago. I, I, I needed to go to Bar Camp Lake from Falls of Little Stoney. And I never really seen the road sign as how to get there. So I'm driving back outside, I'm driving back outside of Falls of Little Stoney and I see one of those wooden signs. And it points this way and it said, "Bar Camp Lake." So I drive my car down into there and I'm like, "Hmm, it's a creek bed." And, you know, I, I know that in places in Scott County you have to afford the creek and everything, but I'm like... I mean, my car could not go over the bumpers, um, where that said to go to Bar Camp Lake. And I was telling Bill about it and he said, "Oh, good lord." He said, "He said, 'That's the hyper trail.'" And fortunately, fortunately, I had enough sense to think, you know, there's not a soul who knows where I am. And that this probably is not the road best taken. So I just turned around and I still have it going, taking those up to Bar Camp Lake. Um, so if you all would consider, you know, adding that, I know this isn't a good time to be asking for money, but a thousand dollars a year in line item for High Knob Enhancement. And then the other question is, and I was just asked this last night, is at the fair, they are going to have a duck tank. And so how many...
No, I'm not duck.
How many of you all want to be duckies?
Let's, let's vote on our, uh, Mr. Chairman.
No, it has to, it has to be, it has to be all or nothing.
Oh, no. If he, if he can't do it alone, uh, just forget it.
Nobody wants to be in the duck tank? Ah, okay. Who, does somebody back here want to be in the duck tank?
Yeah.
All right. So that kind of, that kind of concludes my presentation. Do you all have any questions?
We need to promote this fire thing. I know they're getting their, their, everything out there to advertise it, so...
The posters kind of ready, I shared it with us. Yeah.
So anyway, it's gonna be a good thing. And it's not a Dungian thing, it's a Scott County thing. So make sure everybody understands that.
Yeah. It should be done. You're gonna have a Ferris wheel up there.
Yeah, they have the carnival's gonna be there. They haven't had a carnival before, this time they're going to. That's gonna be a big deal, getting the kids kind of up through the rides.
Yeah.
And the fifteen bucks covers it all. I mean, you can't, you get in and then they ride, you know, as many times as they want.
You ride on that until the general...
Just pray the weather cooperate.
Oh, yeah.
Enjoyed your presentation and love your, your, uh...
Thank you.
brochure.
Thank you.
And leave through all of it. Seems like there's a lot of, who takes the photos with this?
Most of the photos I've taken.
You've taken?
Yeah.
You've done a good job on all of those, so...
Thank you.
And I guess with the map, you know, you can figure it out.
Now, this, this photo is, that is a photo that I paid for. Brad Deal took that. Um, that's a, that's a cell phone photo that somebody took of me. I did take this, um, that's at, that's at Fall, no, that's at, um, Douglas Four. This is a Brad Deal photo, so, um, I did pay for this too. Um, Brad is excellent.
And I noticed also that you have, you know, lodging. You know, we don't have, you know, the great hotels or whatever in Scott County, but there are several places, you know, from the cabins and, and, uh, the bed and breakfast places and, and, uh, you know, different places, there's several of those in...
Oh, yeah.
Toddish, Toddish Houses, so, which is really awesome.
And Pickles really got the B and B.
Yeah. So everybody's listed. And, you know, one of, one of the things that we learned when we were doing the consensus meeting, I don't know if you remember this, was, um, you know, we, we all keep talking about hotel motel, we need hotel motel at Scott County. And then David Woodard, who is the president and who is the executive director of, um, Heart of Appalachia pointed out that Western Front was closed at that time. They didn't have, um, they didn't have, the restaurant was closed. They reopened, um, Wise Inn, has closed all of their restaurants. So maybe that's not our niche. Maybe our niche is to provide, um, incentives, um, money pools for folks to do the Airbnbs. They seem to be very, very, very popular. So folks are kind of shying away from staying in hotels and motel right now, you know, because of COVID. Um, but, you know, maybe, maybe we'll learn what folks want after this, um, survey is completed. So thank you all.
I enjoyed it very much. I always enjoy a presentation.
Thank you.
I think tourism is very important to our county. And I think you, a lot of people don't know who their elected officials are. They know Pam.
They do.
I have, listen, when I was running for office, people mentioned you.
Really?
Absolutely. You are known. So, and you, and you're a great face for our county because what you do is very important.
Thank you. I'm gonna have to be more careful there.
No, that's the thing that everybody loves about you. You have a wonderful personality.
I think.
And, you know, you're a great spokesperson for our county.
Well, I, you know, I love it here. I mean, you know, you all have heard the story, how we ended up here. You know, I, my husband and I found that little piece of heaven sitting there on the P'ch River that one day. I didn't know if it had a bathroom in it. We, we made an offer, you know, of, of the asking price because we wanted it so bad. We drove out the road and I said, "Did that have a bathroom?" Because I didn't see one. I, I saw an outback, I did not see a bathroom. But I didn't care because it's the spot and it's the location. And it takes me back to my childhood to, and, 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 you know, I, I understand about the folks that, um, are concerned that it will, you know, having a campground up there will, will change, but, um, the makeup. But people who are campers and they respect the outdoors, they pick up after themselves. So, you know, hopefully it will be a good thing for all.
Yeah, I hope so too.
Yeah, I hope so too. Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Pam.
We're getting close to the end. We do have a out of the closed session. Before we go there, uh, something that we, we need to talk about, uh, and Mr. Tipton met with the school board folks last week and, um, about this thing we were trying to get resolved with the raise for teachers. Uh, I'd like to see something in hand from the school board, um, that we can look at. And I think some of you that, that voted no on this would probably be more active of yes. Get something in hand to show what their intent, what they're gonna do. I was satisfied with Mr. Ferguson making a public statement that they would be looking at, uh, they would, they would, they would do something about this, uh, the amount of Tennessee. Y'all would?
SKI.
If you would. Okay. Uh, I was satisfied with Mr. Ferguson's statement that they would proceed with this. And, uh, I guess it's a trust issue. Uh, I like to trust people that they would come up with something that would be acceptable by board supervisors as far as curbing the number of students from Tennessee. Uh, I've had a lot of people, it's called, talked, text, messaged, every way they could to, to let us know their feelings about it. Uh, we voted twice here not to include that, that raise in the budget. Uh, the first time I voted no, the second time I voted yes, to do it. It was a forty-two vote. Uh, I believe we need to proceed with this. I know that maybe it's still doable to get the, the amount of money from the state that they've offered if we could, could put this back in. I don't think we should vote today. I don't think we should. Uh, I would like to see something in hand, a draft copy from the school board is what they proposed. One thing they're looking at, they've asked to do, an option maybe is to have an enrollment fee instead of a tuition. Um, and I don't know, I don't, I don't know the particular zone and how that would work. Would it be an annual enrollment fee or a one-time enrollment fee? I know if it's tuition, it cannot be a money-making, uh, proposition for the, the county. Whatever the tuition would be, the amounts that that would be sent back to the, to Richmond or back to the county, whatever you take in, it cannot, you cannot make money off of it. You'd have to send back. Uh, my whole thing here is to lower the numbers coming from out of state. And I think this is a step in the right direction where we do an enrollment fee or tuition that it would, uh, it would eventually fix the problem we have. My thing on it was that it will be a short-term loss, a long-term gain. Uh, the numbers, I, I used the number four hundred, they didn't, maybe more than that, I don't know. They didn't, uh, a couple of things I said they disagreed with. But that number, they haven't disagreed with when I said that. So maybe more than four hundred. Uh, but anyway, I, I would like to, if we get the school system to get us something as quickly as possible. I got a message there from our delegate, Mr. Kilgore, about, uh, getting something done quickly because he's afraid a million dollars will go away if we don't. I guess it's still there. I thought it may have been gone June thirtieth, but apparently it's still there. Uh, but anyway, to get something in place, if the school board could get us something in place to have a special call meeting as soon as possible. as soon as possible to, uh, to address this. I'm not gonna encourage any of you on how to vote. And when this board votes, it may be something I'm, that I don't support. Once this board votes, I support it. Whatever they decision to make, I support this board. That's what I elected to do. As chairman, I will, I will do that. Uh, but anyway, the forty-two vote we had last week, I support that, even though it's a different one I wanted, uh, but I support this board. But I do believe we need to get something in hand, something to look at from the school board as soon as possible. A draft copy that they can see what we, what we have. So I don't know, uh, your thoughts on this? We can, we can get the word to them, get something in hand. We can have a special call meeting. It'll take three days for you to get a special call meeting.
I think so. Is that correct, Sally?
I believe it's one of these, three days.
Three, that's really five, because you can't count the day of the meeting or the day of the.
Okay. So anyway, if they get us something in hand, if you're okay with this, something you can look at, something, you hold your hand. This is what the, this is what it's gonna be, that we can live with.
Can I throw something in the mix?
Yeah, you, you're in the mix. I was gonna ask you some calls you to speak on it, because you met with them and, uh, so if you would.
Um, let me just throw this in, into the mix. Um, going back to the budget, uh, the school portion of it, where that you have the infrastructure operation for people fund, the one, uh, point one, three million dollars, and then with the two fifty-seven thousand for the local match. And then, uh, we also have the, um, compensation supplemental, uh, which was the, uh,
Two hundred thirty-eight thousand.
Y'all, two hundred thirty-eight thousand dollar match. And I know there's been some discussion with us, you know, back and forth, you know, with the emails and such on this, about using the, uh, CARES Act money or COVID money to, uh, I guess trade out on the two fifty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
I, you know, could, and, and this probably is not gonna be popular either, but could we not, um, not do the two fifty-seven match and do the, and do the supplemental match?
That would be, if we did.
And the reason why I mention that is because, um, there's concerns about maybe not being able to use the CARES Act money to do this, uh, trade off on the, the two, two fifty-seven thousand match. And I only, I only mention this because of the predicament, you know, that we're in with the budget crisis and all of that. And I know that probably doesn't sit well with the school because, I mean, they're, they're looking at the infrastructure and all of that. So I, I guess the concern would be have they used any of that? And if they have it, then could we do that? That, that could be an option for us. And that would take care of the teachers.
The two fifty-seven, Brady, is that a required match?
Yes.
It's a required one already?
It's not re, it's required for them to get the additional million, whatever the dollar figure is that you just read.
But we, but we, we could deny the, the match, right?
Does it have the little arrow beside of it? It is an optional match.
It's an optional, so then we could.
Well, if we did do the two fifty-seven, do the two thirty-eight.
Right.
And they get the million nineteen for the supplement raises.
Right.
And if we could use the CARES Act money for two fifty-seven, I think, uh, Mr. Kegley was thinking maybe we probably could. Is that?
That's my.
That's your opinion? Well, here's my thought on that. If we did the two fifty-seven plus this, if we use the CARES Act money for two fifty-seven, if we have to pay it back, so be it. Uh, but Ms. Starr said that Norton is going through an audit right now with their CARES Act money. They're more focused on the small business, the amount that went to the small businesses for as, the, that's what they're focused on as far as the audit. They could come here and audit and look at and say, "Well, you can't do that." Then we could use pay it back. But, uh, anyway, if we could use the, the, the CARES Act money for the two fifty-seven, then that's gonna save us two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. Then we add two hundred thirty-eight back in for the teachers' raises, then they get the million nineteen. So, uh, that's the way I, this is sort of a little different approach on it than we discussed last week. Uh, but anyway, if we put the two, the two thirty-eight back in, we can do it without a public hearing. It's, it's less than one percent of the budget will do that, even today, which if you want to, we will. We'll vote on it, but I don't wanna vote on it if it's gonna be another no. And, uh, but anyway, if we use the CARES Act money, we will actually come out ahead on it and then the, the teachers will give their, their five percent raise. The three percent they're gonna get anyway, the school board has found the money, give them three percent if we don't do anything.
But it's more than teachers' raises.
Pardon?
It's more than teachers' raises. It's the whole school system raises. Is that not correct?
Yeah, every employee, yes.
Every employee for the school system.
Bus drivers, everybody. My janitors, everybody.
Cooks, everybody.
Everybody. It's not just teachers. That's correct. So, uh, anyway, I don't want to come to a vote if it's gonna be another no. I don't, I don't wanna go through that again, uh, but, and like I said, you know, Ms. Starr and Ms. Kegley here, they look hard at this, as the dues and dollars, what you can and can't do. And so that's what they're, they're to do. That's why, you know, Sally does an excellent job advising us about, uh, the dues and dollars. That's why I saw me pay her five hundred thousand a year. You know, and it's supposed, when I say stuff that gets quoted and then I get in trouble, I can't have a Sally's plan. I'm teasing. She don't make my hype of that. I'm teasing. We got less, we got a life a little bit this stuff. I mean, we sit here, we're getting stressed out. Her blood pressure's coming up through her ears because she, she's tore up all of this stuff and she's taking it. That's how serious it is, folks. I talked to her last night trying to calm her down. So her blood pressure, I said, "It's stress." I said, "I have some sleeping issues" because this is a big deal and you better take it seriously.
Absolutely.
I think everybody on this board would like for county employees, school system employees to get good raises. I mean, I'm for raises for the people in Scott County. But we have to look at the county as a whole and, and that's, you know, what we're trying to do. We have to make sure that it is for the good of the county too. And things that are good for the county, long-term, they'll be good for everybody.
If, uh, so the two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, if, if we were able to use CARES Act money for that, then we would swap out and go ahead and pay the two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. That would get them their five percent raise.
Yeah.
And pay the two hundred and fifty-seven through CARES Act, uh, if, if we, if we were able to do that.
That's the, that's the big question on that. So that's, that's why.
Well, on the downside, at least I'm, I'm, I'm gonna throw everything out there. Next year, it's gotta be funded again.
That's, that's what I was getting at.
It's not just a one-time deal.
If we use CARES Act money, we might not have that CARES Act money next year.
Right. You know, and I said this, the two hundred thirty-eight thousand, if you do have four years, it's almost a million dollars out of the general fund just in raises. And it's hard, it, that's why, that's what becomes harder to do because it's not a, if it's a one-time payment, you know, let's do it, but it's not. Once it, once you add it in, it becomes part of that, that funding, you know, forever. And so it's not just a one-time, you know, deal. We covered this year, I think, pretty good and, like, you know, and actually, we're not broke, we've got the money. But long-term, uh, you know, where, where do we stand? But again, the school board has compromised and that's what I want. That's what we wanted. That they will come up with, with something that's acceptable by both boards to, uh, to slow down the number that's coming out, out of, out of, across the state line. We gotta do something about that. And so, uh, anyway.
I think, I think the kind of savior tell, a lot of this can be, um, the tax reassessment, you know, that's happening. So we come out, you know, well on that. Hopefully that, I hope, we'll see how that goes.
Well, what will have to happen, from the people we met with that's done the, the reassessment, you're gonna see, uh, people's values gonna go up. What sets the tax rate probably down, so it's not a killer for people paying tax, what bring the tax rate down to. But you gotta remember too, we gotta operate the next six years, the six years before you do another one. So we may have a, a pretty good influx of, of cash in the beginning, but the time you get in six years, you know, the school sits, we're gonna take a lot, even a lot more money in the next two years. There's more, that we're gonna be, have responsible to pay, probably much as another million dollars. So it's not something that's gonna go away, it's gonna fix, and hopefully the reassessment will help. The last time, we didn't get enough to pay for the reassessment. That's how, you know, that's the way things work. Uh, so. Your own thoughts, where you gonna just proceed to, I throw it out there, what I thought we could have something in hand, or if you think, you know, I'm not gonna let it come to a vote. If we, if I don't, if I think it's not gonna pass, I'm not gonna do it. So your own thoughts?
I have concerns about the CARES money. That's what I, I mean, I.
You're on the committee.
I am on the committee. I mean, we're gonna, you know, we were extremely transparent in how we used that money for everything. You know, we have very strict guidelines and.
The, the, the new money, if that makes sense, is, is, is there less restrictions with that? I mean, I know.
There is. It's less restriction about the first round ones, what I understand. I haven't looked at it, but that's what Brad has said or something other, that there is less restrictions on it.
See, we still have a little bit of the first round.
We do.
With a lot of restrictions. And then we've got another set with less restrictions. Uh, but, but, but the way I understood your email, Sally, your, your concern is that we'd be double dipping, basically? Is that, did I read that right?
We heard from Mr. Ferguson yesterday that they hadn't used that for something. So that concerned us, apparently not an issue, that it's double dipping. But I went on to say then that I still don't think it's, uh, an allowable use of the CARES Act money.
So how do y'all want to proceed?
I think we should get something from the school board showing what they're gonna do, how much it's gonna be and all that.
As far as the, what their plan is for.
Yeah.
I was kinda in that way too.
I don't think that's asking too much.
Yeah. Well, if they get to us quickly, then I'd get on the ball and get, because I don't know when that money will permanently go away. I, I don't know. But, uh, and I don't think Curry knew it. I've asked him and what they said was doubtful, that it would be even available after Jim thirtieth, but I think it's still there. That, and I'm sure he's working with the, the parish to be in Richmond. That they know we're working on it and so maybe it can still happen and, uh, we can get the million nineteen thousand, uh, their part, you know, the.
And what about the option I threw out to begin with?
What now?
The option I threw out to begin with.
Say again, tell me what it was.
Not doing the two hundred fifty-seven thousand.
Oh, not doing the.
Doing the supplemental match, if it's not too late.
Well, if we don't have to do the two fifty-seven, I mean, we're covered, but that's for one year, you know, so.
What is the two fifty-seven? What does that consist of?
Infrastructure.
Tell us at the bottom. The two fifty-seven, if we don't do that, does that knock the amount of, uh, money from the state, that we don't do the fifty-seven?
Over a million dollars.
And so either way, you're going, they're going.
I understand that, but.
Yeah. What does that use for? I don't remember. I've seen it.
I'm just trying to look, you know, for, you know, good viable options away.
Right. And that's nothing wrong with.
If we do this. I mean, that's why we had another discussion, you know, on Friday. So that was about a two and a half hour meeting and, uh.
I think this is all the meetings we do. I mean, if, if all that stuff we meet with and do, you know, this is the smallest part of our job is this meeting. The smallest part is right here.
I think the big thing came out of the meeting was, you know, in the end was, hopefully for better communication. And we need that, you know, between the entities of, of the county and so, um, you know, our, our county has not been in a position, for example, to throw extra money, you know, at the school.
Don't say throw money.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Right there.
I think at the throat.
Yeah. Don't use that term.
Very.
Yeah, but, uh, you know, if you give the school board extra money, then, you know, at the end of the year, if they had money left over, then they could, you know, um, you know, give it back to the, the county. But, uh, we, we haven't been in that situation, in that posture, you know, for some time.
Well, for a long time, I've been trying to leverage the school board to come up with something, and they're doing it. So I really felt like that it was a game by getting them to commit to do something. And what Mr. Ferguson did here in a public meeting, have anything writing, but I think his commitment before the group that was here, the press that was here, it's in the minutes that they had, they worked up a something. Maybe we don't wanna trust, but sometimes you just about have to.
Well, he said that he had already, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Brady, but he had already called Richmond. So they are already aware of them putting forth something, uh, in regards to the Tennessee students.
Did he give you any timeline?
No, I don't think there was really any timelines discussed or anything like that, but, uh.
Well, your own thoughts, if you wanna, to have, uh, Ms. Starr contact them, get us something as soon as possible, even if we, if we meet, uh, next week or the week after, you know, to get this done quick as we can. I don't want that million dollars, million nineteen thousand go away. I, I don't. And so, and it's never been said the teachers, you know, the teachers deserve it. They worked hard. And, uh, but for it to go away permanently, that's, we need to.
Well, I mean, I, I'm committed myself, you know, to meet whatever you need to meet in the next few days or whatever. If we're waiting on a reply back from them.
Yeah. Well, draft copy, would y'all be satisfied with that, that not something that's legally binding yet, but a draft copy to have in your hand to look at?
I want something concrete.
Well, it's gonna be a draft, but they gotta go through all the legal stuff that they have to vote on and all that stuff too, but something. If we got a draft copy, I believe we can hold our feet to the fire on it. This is what it, was, this is what you said you would do and don't back out.
One, one thing we need to watch about the, the two fifty-seven, that's, that's for, uh, in, infrastructure. You know, I think a lot of us have talked about, you know, the roofs and, you know, if we cut that, I think that might, it might be a bad. I don't know. May, maybe I'm not seeing the whole thing here, just, just a sample wording, but it does say if, infrastructure, so.
And that is for the students.
It is.
The infrastructure, that is doing something for our students. So, uh, we don't wanna lose sight of that.
So y'all wanna do that? Uh, get the word back to them and what we can have, like I said, three days to advertise, get it out there and have a special call meeting and come back and that would be what it would be for.
Absolutely.
Everybody okay with that?
Sure. Absolutely.
I wanna see, I wanna.
Yes.
Darrell, I wanna see a head shake, yes or no? Okay. Camera's on, so we got it. Uh, it's not a voice vote, but then we'll do that. All right. All right, anything else on that before we go to our comments, requests, recommendations?
Well, it's not about the school system, order back the county employees and.
I think there is a way to take care of them through the CARES Act money and Ms. Starr's working on it.
Okay.
So, they're not gonna be hurt down. Anyway, she's doing everything she can and, and, and Ms. Kegley too, to try to, to do it and do it right. So, and I think they'll, they'll be okay. That's two, if they can do that. Anything else? Knockdown item sixteen, uh, Mr. Jeter, any comments?
I want to thank the county staff for all they do, thank the teachers for all they do, and we really appreciate the job y'all do. I know you put a lot of time in, but we put a lot of time in too. But, uh, I want, just to thank everybody for the job you do. That's all I got.
That's your tip. Did you not say we're about to have a closed session?
We are.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do this first, then we'll go with a closed session.
Um, yes, I wanna echo what Darrell said as far as the county employees and, um, and our teachers too, you know, for the work that they do too. I mean, it's, it's important just to, to mention that as well. And our small businesses out there that are struggling and we just pray that they, they can get back to some sort of normal, uh, quickly. Uh, way Pam was talking here earlier, so we found that works are in motion, so that's great, so. VDOT issue, what, Highway fifty-eight? Jane Hill, there are trees there. I've gotten a lot of complaints from people that are, some trees have fallen. There are some that are marked and they've not been cut. You know, other trees are leaning over. I'm just afraid they're gonna hit an audible deal as they go through. We, we had one that fell in the road here just, in a few days ago. And I'm not sure if VDOT or firefighters have ever got to that and cut that out of the road or some citizen. And I'm not sure if V-DOT or firefighters have ever got to that and cut that out of the road, or some citizen may have done that. The other location would be going on up Highway fifty-eight and past these, a sturdle construction place, uh, and just a few hundred feet beyond it, there's a stretch of where trees go across the road in both directions, and there are some trees through that wooded area. Likewise, that are about to fall in the road, some trees are marked, so we need to get that taken care of.
All right.
And I guess it was, we haven't heard anything about the solid waste centers, I know at Hilton's, uh, going into the entrance of the site, Bill, I know this has been a, it's an ongoing issue about the, the chuff holes, and bumps, and things of that nature, but-
We'll get to the sites and work them as soon as we can with our tractor, uh, we did put in for capital improvement request this year to, to pay you on in on three of those sites, but you didn't make the cut in the capital improvements.
I understand.
So we'll, we'll do what we can to mitigate those problems.
I know, we hit the county, we're at the dead end, and we, we catch it with capital improvements, or, or one of the first things when we're going through with, you know, looking at the budget, they kind of get mixed out, so, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thanks, sir, Mr. Heron.
Appreciate what everybody's doing, just, La Ray Road, I filled out a complaint, and I think maybe another guy has too, uh, it's between Frosty Lane and Rockview Road, is that right, Bill? You know where I'm talking about, going down the hill, there are five or six drain tiles that are in just a short period of space that are completely blocked, and all that water is going, there's probably a two to three foot ditch on one side, and a sheer drop off on the other, there's nowhere to pass, uh, there's gonna have to be some major work there. And, and like I say, I've turned that in, talked to Jackie about it, I think Jackie's on vacation, but still, we, we need to keep, get an engineer, maybe, or whatever they need to do to fix that, because the road's gonna be gone within a year, to keep draining the way it's been. Uh, Ponderosa Road, the same, same situation, except they, there are no drain tiles. It's a, just a short stretch, but it's very steep, at the very top of it, it has been paved, you know, some of that water, I'm sure, is going down that road, there's nowhere for the water to go, except for down the road. They, they did come and scrape it, uh, and do, do some work, but the day after it rained, and you could see exactly where the water, it just goes straight across the road, if there was just a, a drain tile or two somewhere, and it's, it's the same thing, there's a two or three foot ditch on one side, and a drop off on the next, it, their, school buses used to go down in there, it, it'd be tight for a school bus to even get down through there. My, my truck that I drive, I've, I've got a picture of it, and it's as wide as the road is, there's nowhere to pass, uh, so whatever needs to be done, the engineer might, wha- whatever they do, they're gonna have to have something done, and in the long run, it would save money, because every time it rains, all the, all the gravel's just going off in the pasture field somewhere. So, you know, whatever needs to be done, like, like I say, I've turned in a complaint, and got a reply, and all that, you know, but, uh, need to, need to keep on that. And Sally's, Ruck, Sat, did they ever get up there?
No.
Okay.
That's been like that for months.
It's been several months.
They came out about a month ago, and took a, a saw, and saw two little grooves across the road, I guess where they're, uh-
Gonna maybe dig that drain.
Probably gonna dig it out sooner or later, but that's probably-
Still, there's a big hole there, and all that.
The, the fourth of the road is gone.
The barrel is down in the hole now.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, that's another spot, you know, it's been several months, so need to do, need to do something. Anyway, appreciate what everybody's doing, and glad we're back to normal.
That's it?
Well, I've been busy, as usual. I attended a three-day CAPLAW national conference. CAPLAW is a legal and financial resource for community action. Uh, I had various V-DOT issues, and other questions, regional jail, other ca- uh, county questions by residents. I enjoyed a wonderful Independence Day. I'm thankful for all the freedoms that we have. I had the privilege of being in a country in nineteen ninety-eight that had just attained their freedom from communist rule about seven years before I was there, and I was there during their Independence Day celebration. Now, these people who had had no freedoms were a little bit different than we are, I mean, we celebrate and everything, and we're thankful. These, their Independence Day was very serious, because they were so thankful that they had freedoms. And I'm thankful for our freedoms, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, they didn't have any of that under communist rule. So, I am very appreciative of being an American.
Me too. Thank you, ma'am. Let's group it.
I appreciate the award, I appreciate every one of you all. I appreciate the county, the county workers, and all of the school system employees, I know they've worked hard, I've watched my mom do it, um, so that, that doesn't get lost on me. As far as what this year has been for her personally, so, um, I am, you know, I, this issue of the tuition, and the raise, and the, all of that, I mean, there is a way that we will find a way to work through this, I know that, I mean, this board has been phenomenal, you know, working together, in my opinion. So, I mean, I do just wanna, you know, say that we are working hard, even though a lot of people don't see that, we are working hard behind the scenes, trying to figure things out, you know, so, I, you know, and there's been a lot of prayer, there's been a lot of, you know, that I've, that I personally have prayed for, for this situation. And I'll just leave that there.
Thank you, ma'am. One thing I want to say, uh, last week at the meeting, I was disappointed, uh, some of the caring's on back here from professional people. There is rules that I could have the room clear, when you start booing, hollering, hissing, it's totally unacceptable. Uh, this lady here has been attacked, called names by people, it's teaching her kids. So professionalism that happened here last week was very disappointing. I had the gavel in hand once, to call them out of order, and clear the room. I didn't want a fiasco like we, like they had in Loudoun County where you have to do that. Those people are teaching their kids, and if that's what they're teaching them, and I hope that it's not, you know, it's hard to sit here, the boards we sit on, this is, this is, this is the easiest part of what we do. When we meet with, uh, uh, the APA board, when we meet with the Cleo board, Leno Wisco board, we got so many other things here that we have to be a part of, because we're sitting here. And people see this, it's the only thing we do, and we take it lightly, I can promise you, it's not. And so, when we try to get water to someone on top of a mountain that hasn't had water in it now for over a year-
Two years.
It's gonna work, it'll be two years in November. And so, but, I was disappointed, uh, the, the professional people in this county, to sit and boo, and holler, and yell, and stand to give somebody a standing ovation. I could have called them out of order and, and cleared the room if I wanted to, that was not an option for me. I was disappointed, that, and this lady here, the attacks that she has gone through, called names, because she spoke something that is technically true. In Baltimore, look at it, Google it, almost eighteen thousand dollars per student. Their output is horrible, the, the kids, the education they're receiving. This county does it for a lot, not high for that, but close, and they do an outstanding job in this county. We got people wanting to come here for that reason, because we got a good, a good school system. We're gonna work through this, we're gonna fix this, I think that everybody will be pleased, but it's not something this board took lightly to, uh, to, you know, to, to do what we did, and I support this board. But I'm hoping that if we have a special call meeting, it'll be advertised, and I hope some of the people will come in here and apologize to this lady, to this board, for acting so rudely. Professional people, teaching their kids, if they're teaching them that, I hope, present, this, this was a minority vote, I think the majority, I've heard from a lot of them, and they were so, uh, disappointed in their fellow teachers, and whoever they were, they're retired or whatever, that would come here and try to invade, uh, I don't say trying to be a bully, but try to do that, and I believe, I'm not, I don't know, but I think them coming here may have caused that forty-two vote. I've talked to some of them, that may have been what, what swayed it, it should, it could have been four-two the other way. But their actions, you know, it's kind of hard to accept, these professional people that act as so unprofessional. It's hard to say, it's hard to give them a raise, and say, we want more of this, I want less of that kind of behavior. It's hard to support that when you see something happen here last week. The YouTube camera was off, uh, I went back and forth about with the, to turn it on or off, and I didn't want much theatrics for people on camera, and would really show themselves. But anyway, I want these people, they should come back and apologize for the way they acted, the booing, the hissing, the yelling, standing up, totally unprofessional, and unacceptable by me as chairman of the board of Scott County Board of Supervisors, totally unacceptable for them to do that. Anyway, I was out in the crowd mingling with them, I took a sign, and she tried to talk to them, if you want to speak, eight people did, let a couple more speak, that didn't sign up, but, anyway, folks, we're, you're, they're professional people, they should act accordingly.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I applaud the board members, uh, for, uh, the board does, and I might add that, uh, if you count the hours that we do, and with the different boards that we attend on-
What boards you serve on the size of?
Several.
I see, Leno Wisco.
Yeah, yeah, ESA board, and the BCC board, and of course, you know, and this board, and the time you put all the hours together, and I can tell you, we have had a pay raise, I don't base my decision on that. I'm not looking for a pay raise.
Me neither.
Uh, the hours we put in, uh, you can actually compute it up, uh, would you, would this be the consensus of this board, that we would be making less than minimum wage?
Yeah, at fifty cents an hour, is, you know, so it's-
Yeah, what is it, fifty cents an hour, dollar an hour, maybe, maybe?
That's why I said, take the abuse like what Selma has taken, talked to her last night, and she's talking about her blood pressure stuff, and I was, you know, but if, you know what I tell her, she takes it seriously. And I'm gonna tell you something she said, thought about resigning, her son said, Mom, you've never quit nothing in your life. You've never run away from anything, so she's not gonna resign, but that's how, that's at the point she was at, she has health issues, and her health is number one, I mean, but that's, that's what it's doing, and for some, them to be treated like she's been treated, they're blaming us for Route twenty-three backup. I put on, I said, you know, we're board supervisors, not V-DOT, we don't control that, but they're attacking us because of what's going on, and wherever we set the traffic back there. Anyway, enough said, I'm getting, I get fussed after talking too much, don't I?
That's right.
All right, I'm sorry, Martha, I didn't mean to cut you off, but, uh, let's go into a closed session, we have, uh, we have one item, let me read this, get this right. Uh, we have, uh, one item to go into closed session, we need a motion.
So moved.
Darrell made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
That's true. Second, this board here, my address, to closed session, for student Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one, being eight point seven legal counsel. Ms. Caglin's gonna be lead that, we're gonna have her with her, so we have some things we need to do, so, uh, all for everybody's and I. I oppose, so we'll go into closed session, and, uh, we'll be back shortly. Identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Scott County Board of Supervisors, need a motion?
So moved.
All right, Mr. Jeter made a motion, do we have a second? Mr. Tipton, second, need a roll call, by Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Jeter?
Yes.
Mr. Tipton?
Yes.
Mr. Haren?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Ms. Hood?
Yes.
Ms. Creby?
Yes.
Okay. We're back in open session, and if we have a special call meeting, she'll get the information out, and they do it, hopefully, they will act quickly on that to get us some information on it, and have something, and have a draft copy of what they intend to do. All right, we will adjourn the, the regular meeting to be August fourth, two thousand twenty-one, but hopefully, we can see everyone before then if we, if we get this done. Using the last supposed meeting, I'm gonna start doing it by motion to close the meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Chairman, second, on my favor, both say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so we are now done.